Well, we get to be school board guys.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, and let's start off with our regular meeting for Wednesday, September 29th, 2021, and we're going to stand and say pledge allegiance one more time.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if I could have the ministerial report on agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
The agendas were posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School in the town of Sugar Camp, town of Three Lakes, town of Monaco, and the media notified included Vilas County News, Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD WATK Radio.
All right, thank you for that. Do we have any amendments tonight?
We do not.
Okay, all right, no amendments, so I will seek approval of tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Colette, okay. All right, motion by Josh, second by Colette. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard. Motion passes five zero. Next, we go to approving the minutes of the August 18th, 2021, regular meeting. The meeting minutes were given to us in the packet.
I'm going to motion approve minutes of August 18th, 2021, very, very, very.
Okay, a motion by Stacy, second by Colette. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. I'll call it to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard. Okay, very good. Motion passes five zero. Next, approving vouchers. Check register for the period of August 14th, 2021 through September 23rd, 2021.
Make a motion to approve checks stated eight fourteen twenty-one through nine twenty-two twenty-one for accounts payable, regular checks number one two five one nine five through one two five four zero one and manual checks number five two one six through five two three zero in the amount of six hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, and ACH payroll checks number nine zero 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 three five nine three one through nine zero 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 three six one 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 in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and four cents for a total amount of eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-two cents.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Terry. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard. Motion passes five zero. Number seven, hearing comments from visitors on tonight's agenda items. Would anyone like to speak to anything under our agenda items tonight? All right, let's go on to new business, starting off with introductions of newly hired staff. Terry?
Yes, we're going to introduce our new science teacher tonight. Luke Stats comes to us from Rhinelander, but we're not going to hold that against him. We're in fact actually very happy to have him with us, and I asked Luke, you know, kind of spur of the moment, instead of us talking about you, we want to hear from you, so thank you, Luke.
Thanks for having me.
All right.
My name is Luke Stats, I'm a science teacher here. I teach physical science, biology and community biology, and an independent study course for ecology. I taught three years at the middle school in Rhinelander, which was a great time, great learning experience, but like you said, I'm glad to be here, Three Lakes. So far, I'm really enjoying my time. I'm originally from Wasa, Wisconsin. I graduated from UW Stevens Point with a degree in natural science education. I'm an outdoorsman. I like hunting, fishing, especially fly fishing. My wife and I often make trips to Montana where we get to float the riggers and do a lot of carp days out there as well. That's all me and the nutshell. You guys have any questions?
So, an outdoors person?
Uh, yes, I fish the lower mets and I've yet to fish the upper. Got to make the trip to Inglewood.
Good night.
Yep, more trout than people. We're in grid this summer, so we float them there in quite a few times.
So, an outdoorsman, so bringing the classroom outside?
Yeah, absolutely. Hopefully I can get the ecology out pretty soon. You know, ecology is going to go out with the Waterfront Association Biologists. Mr. Wasa's class is going out October 6th or whatever we get out next after that, and biology as well, so as often as I can do outside, be out there.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Great.
Awesome.
Yeah, welcome to the district.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy to have you here.
Yeah, glad to be here. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Luke. And because I said he thinks on his feet very quickly, Justin, you don't know this, but we would like to have you talk about yourself a little bit more. I said he introduced himself during the summer, but I guess we didn't give you the proper introduction, so we'd like you to come up to the mic and share a few words.
Are you sure about that? You're going to hear me quite a bit. Thank you. First of all, I have to say about Mr. Stats, he, in about fifteen minutes, got me jacked up about science for the first time I met him, and after seeing him for about three weeks working in our school, he's got kids really excited about science, and that's about as big a compliment as I can give to someone in the building. It's good stuff. Kids are really excited about science, and that's a fantastic thing. And I think some stuff we're recording out later about this, of course, probably probably suited for him as far as his classes are some things I have in mind when walking around on that place. So, yeah, I don't know, what do you want me to talk about? I've been in education for twenty-one years, I guess. Doesn't seem like it's been that long, but my career started as a teacher in rural Rhinelander District. Please don't hold that against me, but in about two thousand and seven or eight, took an opportunity to work, to not work like a human. There I was, got to a school administrative entry role, being students, activities director. Went from there to assistant principal and activities director. I would recommend that one in terms of combination. If that was three or four more years, that would be in front of the table, and then went to assistant principal and assistant principal over there. Very, very thrilled and excited that the opportunity came for me to throw my neighbor a hat to come over here. It has been, and it seemed to be a really cool thing to work where I live. It's really kind of neat to know the kids, know the kids that are here. Before I came in here, I'm pretty sure I know about a hundred, a hundred and forty kids in high school. I think I got all, all a hundred and forty, even now, working on junior high kids a little bit, but it's really cool to be in a small, smaller school environment where I just do everything. It's awesome. The people are awesome here. I'm really glad to be here and excited about it. It's just, I grew up in a really small school, so this feels like home to me. I've lived in the community for all twenty-one of those years, or a couple, so glad to be here, excited about what we can do here in the future together. First month, and then awesome.
Excellent.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great. So, Carrie Bolt, would you like to say a few words?
I don't think I have enough voice.
I, I know. She's an anomaly, right? Well, for those of you who may remember, Carrie was our school, on our school board for, I believe it was eight years.
Seven.
And, was it seven or eight? And now she is a member of the staff, so Carrie, whatever you want to share, just a few words would be nice. Thank you.
Are we okay? Well, I find myself sitting in the audience wanting to say aye. I'm excited to be sitting on the other side of the mound. I too grew up in the Wasa area. It's an evergreen, so, but this has been my central home ever since. I can't remember. I came out here as a little girl, and my sister is at Reno getting here, my parents are here, so we call it, you know, home now. And out of college, I took a position in the Oklahoma Falls School District as a speech psychologist, and worked there for a couple of years, and Charlie and I wanted to get back to the Northwoods because we wanted to raise our kids and took a position in Rhinelander, and have been there ever since, until this year, and worked in several different capacities in Rhinelander as an SLP, and then I went down the administrative pathway, and then was able to be an income principal and associate with individuals under my director of special ed, and most recently I was a school psychologist in Rhinelander. Super excited to be here in Three Lakes. I love the small school. Actually, I went to a huge high school, so they know all of the kids in the high school, so it's really neat to be here in a smaller district and really feel the family and community support, so I'm just really excited to be my husband's boss at home in that school, so. But just, yeah, really enjoying being here and getting with the staff and students and families and community, so thanks for having me.
Yeah.
Questions for me?
It's great that you didn't leave, so. And look forward to all the enhancements and improvements that I know you'll do with the department, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any others here? Is that, that it?
That's it for today.
All right. Okay, well, thank you for letting us put you on the spotlight here for a moment and share your story. That's always good to hear. Moving on, we have October meeting dates. Terry, what do we have?
Our regular board meeting would be scheduled on October 20th at 6:00 PM in the boardroom. That's back on our regular meeting schedule.
All right, okay, so no changes there?
Nope.
So, no motions needed. Next, we have consider approval of the Three Lakes School District budget for 2021 through 2022 school year. All right, so the budget as presented by Marco, probably twenty minutes ago, half hour ago. I'm looking for a motion to approve that budget.
So moved. Second.
Okay, a motion by Terry, second by Josh. Any questions, comments, anything? All right, hearing none. I'll call it to question. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard. And again, compliments, a great presentation and very well organized. Thank you. Very good. Selects move to D, consider participating in the Department of Health Free COVID Testing Program. Terry?
Earlier this summer, the state of Wisconsin has been working with the Department of Health Services to try to bring testing to school sites, and it was something that people were a little apprehensive about, and I have also been apprehensive until we learned more about it, because when it first came out, it was presented as this is what we'd like to do, but there was no specific information or particulars that we could hang our hat on. And in the meantime, I have been working with them, and we do have a vendor assigned, but of course I wanted to bring that to the board for approval before we move forward. And what this is, is onsite testing, and how we would do it in Three Lakes is on two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, this mobile unit from Accelerated Labs would come to our district, and students and staff or family members that are closely associated with the students could be tested for COVID-19. It is something that in the last few weeks to, really about the last month, the six weeks specifically, getting testing has become very difficult, almost impossible in our area. I didn't realize how tough it was until we're hearing that people are having to travel to Wasa to get tested if they need to. The pharmacies that were abundant in testing before, with the closing of programs such as the National Guard program and pharmacies cutting back, they're not readily available. So, this is something that has been presented to us, and it's pretty much at many different levels that you could have the program. And I shared some information with you in your packet with the board, that it can be as extensive as asking everybody in the district to sign a permission slip so testing could occur at any time, to very restrictive, which is what I'm asking the board to consider. It would be completely optional. It would not be by district administration recommendation. It is for the convenience of our families and our staff members to have quick and accurate testing available. The testing that we would have would be, I'm going to say it wrong, Josh, you can correct me if I say it. It's the PRC?
PCR.
PCR. I say it wrong every time, and that's the more in-depth test rather than the rapid test because of the accuracy. Right now, they're saying the test results are out five to seven days. However, I've been in contact with the other districts around who have started, Rhinelander did start last week, and it's been closer to a twenty-four hour turnaround, so as of yet, it has been going well. I would just think that this would be very beneficial to our district, again, in trying to prevent the spread. Another mitigation strategy, parents have done a great job of keeping sick kids home, but as soon as we can get people tested, as you know, right now there's a lot of virus and such going on. If a person is suspected of COVID and they aren't tested, they can be up out up to fourteen days depending on the situation, whereas a negative test can result in a child being back in school much more quickly. Our kids onsite getting their education is the primary goal for all of us, and it's very difficult, even this past week, as the board knows, we had to quarantine two classrooms who, in all honesty, are very unlikely not to have been subject to exposure, but that is the guidelines that we're living under right now. So, anything that we can do as another potential layer of making sure students are safe and yet being able to get their educational plan as seamlessly as possible is what I'm looking for here. To register, it would be by parent registration. A child would be in the car with the parent. They would drive up to the mobile site. Pre-registration by the parent or guardian is required. The results go directly to the parent and to the health department. We would be notified at the school level by the health department just as we are by any other means of testing vendors or sites. For instance, if it's at a clinic or a pharmacy, Oneida County is notified, and then they notify us. Just one other little piece of information, we are really on top of this, and often we hear or parents report that there is a possibility or a positive, and I or the principals, and a shout out to Todd Ria this week, who did a lot of extra hours above and beyond on this, we're calling and saying we have a concern, and often we hear, we don't have that name yet or that case yet, and then, but we can start taking measures, and then we get sometimes within hours, sometimes the next day. Yes, that is the case. So, I just want the board to know how very seriously we are taking the precautions, and I just see this as another level, another layer to bring a service to our kids and staff. This is not open to the community. It is not something that you could bring your neighbor in. It will not be extended any further than parents, or for instance, if there is a parent or a caregiver in the home, for instance, maybe a grandmother, that would be in the car or directly in contact with that, that child, that would be allowed, they would be allowed to be tested, but it would go no further than that. And I did verify that we have the right to, if we feel it's not going well, if we are concerned, that we can end the program such as this. I see it as only being beneficial. Confidentiality would be maintained at all extreme, and I bring it before you for your consideration, and I welcome any questions.
Is there a cost involved?
There is no cost involved. It is funded through the ESRS, ARPA money, not from that which is funded to us directly at the school, but that which is given to the state from the federal level.
Well, I for one would fully support having the ability to do this. I mean, we can't do enough, and anything we can do above and beyond to help our situation out is beneficial to us and kids.
Do we have the ability to have this, do we have the ability to have this testing also done? That sure can.
Yes, we can set up the location and the times. Testing would take place from 7:30 to 4 o'clock. I am quite certain, I would not commit to anything until this meeting, but I am certain that we could do some hours at Sugar Camp as well. The idea of this, and even having the conversation, that we could have our students, for instance, if there was a Wednesday concern, we can work out an agreement with Rhinelander that our student or parent could take them to the Rhinelander site. It would still come to us for verification, but we would honor each other's locations.
Pines is doing this too.
Pines is doing it, but Pines is doing it through a different vendor.
Oh, okay, so there's...
And there's not choice by vendor. It's who you randomly were selected.
Okay, so we wouldn't have the ability to do some kind of a, like we would Rhinelander?
I don't know that that's the case. I have talked to Scott Foster, and we would like to share, but being different vendors.
Right.
It takes a little bit more legwork to find out.
Right.
And I will be discussing it with the health department, Oneida County and Vilas County health departments, because they seem to think there could be some way that we could work this out, but I didn't want to get too fur, much further into it until we knew what our, our status would be.
All right, is anyone prepared to make a motion?
What do you call the first public, Mr. Terry?
The Department of Health Free COVID Testing Program.
My suggestion for a motion would be to make a motion to participate in the Wisconsin Department of Health Free School COVID Testing Program as presented.
So moved.
Colette, okay, so we have a, we have a motion by Terry, second by Colette. Any further questions, comments, questions, anything?
One quick question. Terry, if you were to, if at any point you were to change, at what level you wanted to do the screening or the testing, would you bring that to the board then again?
Yes, I absolutely would, because it would require parental permission, and I think we're getting into another area, which the presentation by the state was do it as a blank at all and then back off, but I believe we have to go the opposite way. So, you would have full knowledge and would make that decision again before we go forward.
All right, no other questions. I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. I think it's a great opportunity for students and staff and, yeah, and help us continue to get, get beyond, I guess, COVID, I guess, as soon as we possibly can, so. Moving on to setting the 2022 graduation date.
I can do it. As by tradition and past practice, graduation would be scheduled for May 27th, Friday night at 7:00 PM. We're looking to formalize that, so Jen Les can start doing more with her publicity. We can make sure it's firmed up on the calendar, and as we talked about in last year and the year before, we had, or you as a board had come to the decision that we feel it's best practice to set a graduation date and stick with it, and then depending on what might come our way, if we have to alter the way we deliver the program, we're better off than moving the date.
All right, I will accept a motion for setting the 2022 graduation date.
I'll make a motion to set the graduation date for Friday, May 27th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. All second.
Okay, a motion by Stacy, second by Colette. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard. Motion passes five zero. Next, we have the October 2021 Washington DC trip update report.
I will let Mr. Zeus take that one.
I have a question. Just an update or a few comments about our DC trip, assuming the herd or normal rate, we are, we have postponed the trip that we were waiting for later back to work. For an overall precaution made, the best way to sum it up is as we are, you know, and Terry said earlier today, the biggest goal, get our kids, keep our kids in classes, we don't worry about it best there. And as our neighbors, Mr. Shaw and Brandon, a little bit here at home, our experiences, shutdowns and closures due to outbreaks and, you know, numbers are rising, not just here, but in the local center as well, just a check that, boy, maybe not the best time out of the plane with our staff on class, four staff members and a bunch of parent channels, and across the country. Please know that I'm committed, we're committed to getting these kids into community, fundraising for it, we contribute to school dollars for it. None of the funds are lost in this decision. Best case scenario, many of our vendors, we've got a lot of people who work with that trip, right? We've got the bus companies, we've got the airlines, we've got tour companies here in the state, we've got tour companies over in DC. Worst case scenario is we get a year's worth of credit, credit to use or schedule within three years, and if I, some of them are full on green if you want right now, so. energy line right now. So none of the dollars are lost, all of the chaperones that paid their bill, we're still giving them money. So that's really good sign up here with this. We're a couple hats on this trip, both as a principal and as a dad in the chaperone who's been with us all these years way back in this class as eighth grader. Both hats, I feel like the best move is to both of us not. So if you have any questions, it's certainly the open energy and those that you've got any of it. I would also add that there was zero negative feedback on that decision. A few folks contacted myself about, boy, thanks for making that decision. It's kind of worrying us. So now that negative feedback, I thought it might be, it's a big deal for our community, for our kids. We're still adopting, we've got a two years left of this class. So I gotta believe, I'm hopeful that sometime it's gonna be a better opportunity to make that trip where we don't take that adverse, mess up the system here in terms of our health and safety and being adverse.
Very good. Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board members? No. I guess, as you stated, we are committed. So just, the timing isn't right right now and I get it. So, very good. I appreciate the report and the explanation. All right. You're gonna stand up the bat next too, aren't you? School for, next we're gonna go to the School Forest Highway A Property Update Report.
So this one certainly under respect to all the work and the time that the board and the community have done, felt the need to keep you updated as to what happened since last month. So in no particular order, I'll give you kind of updates of what's transpired and where we're at. First and foremost, thanks a great deal of quality time zooming driving forth with Gretchen, I forget Gretchen's last name, she's in the state, and some of our, she's the supporter here with us. So she's a part of this school state forest program on EWSB and it's really some valuable insight from her to do this thing the right way from the get-go. And I'm very nice, we're doing the curriculum, some sort of curriculum building work for this school forest before we ever started construction of anything. It's happening very quickly in terms of already on the eleventh of October, for Service Day, with all staff, we've got some time budget and then they're just starting to get some ideas existing, you can focus like Mr. Schatz, who has a passion for outdoor education in a number of areas. So that as we start to plan and design some of the access trails and things of that nature, we know we're building it for what we have made before and what we're gonna utilize before, rather than putting it backwards and you know. So with the end in mind as well, we're gonna start the plan as far as especially access trails and emergency stations for the course of the parcel. That in as far as curriculum planning going, going forward, there's gonna be a handful of teachers, and I've heard from many of them already, who are absolutely fired up. We have in the back of their mind a whole list of things, explaining, okay, I can utilize this experience outdoors to enhance what I'm already doing in the classroom. There should be some folks who are, yeah, gonna be happy to, but I just don't know exactly how to do that. For that group of teachers, we've got a ton of resources at our fingertips, managed progression, but also some of our experiences that someone's had previously. The LEAF program is a wonderful opportunity for, for folks to see some, some lessons in the outdoors that have been tried and tested and really helped to bolster your, your work with the kids, getting hands on and getting them outside in some experiential situations and work towards standards, we're working towards their classroom, both core subjects and the life of. On that side, you know, Bushak and Ria both are going along with, all of our sixth grades, seventh and eighth grade are going out to feature in the forest program hosted at the River State Forest. That's coming up on the fifteenth of October. So that's a dual purpose thing. Our kids can get a great experience there and sandwich school forests and I think they're gonna come back, they'll come back with a number of ideas. So as we're working on ours, we can build it like we need it as far as that goes. So talking to Gretchen, she's using a checklist, said, okay, here's, she's great, okay, here's what we need to, from this point forward, she knows everything up to this point, she's been working with us on the parcel. Forest management plan, check, got it, complete. That was the important thing because if we don't have a forest management plan and all of a sudden we start to do things and then go with forest management plan and oh gee, we can get some trees out of there and we've got stuff built already, it can be a problem in some ways. We've done that already, so good. And then some of these things, many of these things have been done by folks far before we've been involved in. So great work for those who have worked on this. Forest management plan, check, got it. Weather impact report, check, got it. Oneida County, no hurdles in terms of the counties, anything we're gonna do moving forward, Oneida County has no barriers or permits to me to take it through the pen. So check, that's, that's good. We're all good there. What are the next steps from my perspective is we're gonna get an engineering firm to come to take a look and start to help us with the planning of the wares, okay? What I mean by that is we've got some basic ideas, right? One of the things we're, we're thinking about is an outdoor classroom, nothing fancy, nothing extravagant, anything like a picnic pavilion, a roof for, for kids and teachers that are out there when they're young or something like that, some place to start your, your activities out. That's one thing that's a basic plan in their minds, a restroom, some places where buses or vehicles park and then of course trail system and a track range. Those are kind of built, those are the things that we're looking to, to move forward with, kind of in a short, and I say short, decent, all the time. That's, that's like the first sort of thing in, in terms of when you start to drive by an area in upcoming months and like this, all of these stuff that's, you know, that next, on the other side, but that's these are some of the things when you start to see, right? In order to do that and do it right, we feel like we all have our ideas after being on the property, but we feel like getting in touch and having an engineering firm take a look at it and give us their ideas, this is a good move. And I can't take credit for it, but Jeff Smith, one of the neighbors, has made a connection for us and found, we've been, Mr. Bolson and I have been meeting at different places, including NRA's website, NRA's rep, to figure out whether we can get some, someone who knows about track ranges and things like that. Well, there's an engineering firm that's fairly local and the district has worked with it for and had positive results. The team leader's on the minder and actually he's the RHS trap team coach and he's designed the sporting plays range at the Hodegun, Hode sport club that they're going to shoot some range design. Anyway, he's the team leader for this engineering firm, MSA. He works on the minder. We may have mentioned him, he'll come in and take a look, give us some ideas as to, you know, where we can do this and have at least some more impact. We, the good news is if you all work with, with the wetlands designation, there's not a ton of work around, okay? There's not a lot of places that are off the table to do that. So that's good, but we also want it constructed in a way that A, makes us good neighbors, right? And B, make it so that when we have the track range and the rest of the school forests can coincide and not be all broken up. Okay, so we want, we want to put somebody far smarter than me in charge of where things could go, okay? Get some ideas. So that's gonna happen real, real quickly here in the upcoming future so we can get those ideas, knowing about our ideas and standard proof and, and certainly you would be part of that, you know, process once you get to that point. Also, we've got a total boatload of dynamite civil engineers in, in the local organization, Josh and most of them, I think, who have graciously said, hey, whenever you need us, let us know. We're not the ones to plan out the school forests, we certainly know a little bit about parking spaces and access roads and grades and things like that. So they've, in a couple of different instances, said, hey, whenever you need us, just let us know, all right? So, so that's super cool by half, local folks who are willing to pitch in. I'm Andy Carter. The last thing I'll talk about is today I spent some time this morning walking around the property with a couple of neighbors. A couple of neighbors who we've heard here in auditorium kind of speaking against us being neighbors and it was hardworking, not to sound too dramatic, but it was really kind of cool to walk around with them in the property today and hear all their ideas about, hey, wouldn't it be cool for kids to see this? Wouldn't it be cool for a history lesson here? Just in the walk through this morning, there's half a dozen places around here and we gotta have a trail for this spot because this is a spot where I can see a history teacher bringing some kids, science teacher bringing kids, fire, which is spending more material. There's a million things spinning through my head of all of these two of those places, but maybe the best thing of this morning was that you had a couple of neighbors who were so crazy about the idea initially, help it stop, help it stop. And in fact, one has talked to several community organizations, plenty of support groups, both in Sugar Camp and in your two rates, and I'm not gonna mention names specifically, because I think some of those places have been, this month, they were specifically talking about potential donations of, of funds going to projects to be getting made or like maybe we, gates and landscaping and all these sort of things. But one of the neighbors had gone, um, yeah, to make it to next for us on our app with potential funding projects coming away. So that was super, it was super experienced not just to see the backside of the, the property we found, pretty much all the places , market corners. And it's not all thirka. You know, when you drive by it, I have a thousand times on highway eight, look at that front part, it's all slash and it's all thirka. And then there's some pretty diverse pieces of property in the back of the parcel, highlights, lowlands, more, not old growth, but further along growth, trees that I'm sure tree ID projects online for kids are gonna be utilizing very quick. Anyway, that's, that's a mouthful. That's my whole list of things I want to make sure you can go up that we're moving forward on. Next steps are, are A with E and R, permitting process, many times you messed with more than any other property, you got down their, their blessing. That's gonna be the work so shortly. And like I said, the engineer lineup to come on who this would give us their ideas are the two things most quickly in the future's trash and not mine, so. That's my, my sort of.
You mentioned you're hoping to get fundraising done. Do you have funds available this year for the permits, the, any of the engineers, any of that, or is it all something that we're gonna have to raise funds for?
That, that's a good question. I don't have the company in front of me, but I do know that the trap team has some funds available, but then again, I don't feel like it's a great first attempt at those for some of the things that are gonna be more school forest wise. Service of the trap range, yes, that's, that's a brand. But Miss Me, do you think, what, what would your take on that be as far as funds available right now in the new year?
Well, as far as goes forward, I think I've been pretty clear that this is not just about the trap range and they do have a lot of money that they raised through fundraising, but I don't think that you can ever say that it's gotta be funded by their donations. This has become an extension of this district property and I know I've heard in the past that there were promises made that there would never be money spent on our property or on this property, but I believe it's only honest and accurate to say, when you're looking at a piece of property, which in this case is an extension of our classroom, along with providing extracurricular opportunities and the educational component that would be there. This is something that I do believe could fall under Fund Eighty. Marco and I have talked about that in the past. We would need to find out what kind of money we're talking about. The man that Justin referred to is Phil Creasel, who did our MSA study for the potential of having an aquatic center, got great information. They were, they were very reasonable and inexpensive. I mean, we would definitely want to get a quota or a proposal, but long way of saying, I don't think we can just say we're taking the money only from trap funds. I think that that's something that we have to realize this is part of district business.
And I was referring more to possible fundraising for the outdoor classroom, not necessarily using the funds you already have that were sort of collected for that purpose of the trap.
So, so I would probably answer that question a lot more specifically in what we're on. It's a little more about what exactly we're talking here, but at this point in time, I don't have any like, oh my gosh, you're starting for cash, you can't do this, you can't do that. I think next step would be able to be taken without committing multiple dollars.
And I think as we move forward with plans and, and you know, providing some type of vision, members in the community and no doubt will be stepping forward as you've already had some comments from your civil engineer, people, people are gonna wanna be part of this project. And I definitely can think of somebody in the wood industry that'll be interested in as well, so.
That's true, because there's international issues by our, our neighbors, we might be able to call.
Okay, good.
And, and along those lines, while I think of it, I mean, we were visioning this morning, we were sitting out there beautifully, walking the woods, whatever. I'm envisioning a baby sign out there, you know, given respect and honor to all the folks who will be unsure in some part and step forward, contributing time under their expertise, their, their dollars, this project gets, it's a really cool thing, we wanna celebrate that.
We need to get a name for it too.
I'll put that on the list. I think you're right.
Well, it's more than just a forty out and eight.
I think I see a big smile from Jen way back there, so. She's a user marketing talent.
Any other questions?
Make a little contest out of it.
You know, that's definitely entirely possible, our students and staff, et cetera, so a lot of options there. Well, Justin, I can definitely see you're excited about it and that, that's, that's really great to see and thank you for that presentation.
Jeff, is there, was there a, I can't remember, but wasn't there some sort of narrow beach freeway road out in that area someplace, under lake?
Yes, I know the more history, it should be very smart, but everyone's a senior person and that was part of it, it was beautiful. But yeah, I don't know if it's a parcel.
Yeah, I might look into a name somewhere.
All right, very good. Thanks, Justin. Okay, we can go next to our personnel report.
Okay, our personnel report, our hirings. Ryan Opel for maintenance and custodial. Shannon Lacks for student council co-advisor. Scott Lindquist for student council co-advisor. Jen West for our junior high volleyball team A coach and Ellie Soder, junior high volleyball team B coach.
Excellent. All right. Next we go to district related positive happenings. Okay, first month of school is almost done, right?
Can I start? I have a really good one.
All right.
All right. So this has to do with some, two amazing students here that have helped the Sugar Camp youth soccer this year. And so I'm just gonna read my email and then try to not talk too much because I'm really passionate about this and want these two to be recognized. And I did share with both of them that I was going to be doing this to them. So, so I sent this email to Justin and then Coach Wales and Coach Boatman as well. So this first student I'd like to reference to recognize is Ian Maugh. Ian has helped me. I coached U ten and U twelve soccer last year and this year and he helped me for the second year in a row, when he can attend practicing games because between his work schedule and then also playing high school soccer, but he's there providing support not only to me as the coach, but amazing role model to these, these youth players. He adds a whole another dimension and has been a tremendous help and hope he can be recognized for his efforts. He helped me this past weekend with our U twelve tournament and it was just nice to have his expertise as to how to handle some situations that occurred during that and. And, you know, how would your coach handle what just happened? And so it was pretty amazing and he's a great, great kid, so he deserves some recognition. And then the second one is Trevin Wachowski. Trevin jumped in to help a week ago Tuesday for the U-14 team. And my son Matthew plays on that team. And this is a direct quote from Matthew. I asked him how practice went that night and he said, I learned more from Trevin today than I did all season. We did a scrimmage between the U-12 and U-14 team that night and Trevin's energy was out of this world. I thought he was going to lose his voice. He was so excited. Every kid felt special and saw confidence in every single player that led him. Another amazing role model he is, so I, again, would love to have him be recognized for his amazing talents and efforts. So they just, it's been pretty neat to see that. And the kids still, you know, my kids, my kids still talk about that experience and how much fun that was. And hearing Matthew talk on the way home about how, mom, I've never been confident in myself, but I have this new confidence after one night. So that was pretty awesome and hoping that that pushes him through to play in his freshman year next year. So it's pretty cool how impactful those kids have been. So, thank you.
I had some positive feedback from the store owners of all our kids being out there painting for homecoming. They get everything done and working well together and being very positive about it. So I thought that was very nice.
Great. Ryan?
Before we get too far, can I tag on to Stacy real quick? Mike?
Yeah.
Can I tag on to Stacy? The soccer program as a whole was a, was a very huge success. The numbers in Sugar Camp at Three Lakes were, Sugar Camp had two teams at the upper, at the couple of the upper levels, the lower level, multiple teams. Athletics numbers are definitely on their way up. I'd like to recognize Stacy as, as a coach and volunteering her time there as well. You know, it's not easy. So just wanted to tag on to that, that our district is, it's wonderful, wonderful to see all the involvement all the way through. Sorry, Ryan.
And I'm going to take on the Josh's take because the other day, earlier this fall, I was walking through, we were in the park here at Three Lakes. And I noticed one of our students out there. I said, boy, I look like Manny DePui. And sure enough, it is, doing a lot of like what Stacy talked about with DeH and Trevin. Manny, and I thought, oh, maybe Manny's just filling in tonight for a coach. No, Manny was at, I believe, U-8, coached one of Three Lakes teams for one entire season. And it, it's good for the kids and it's good for Manny. It's just a beautiful thing because you see those kids, they look at a high school player and their eyes are in this place. And it's just a beautiful thing. So the more of that we can do, the better. Awesome thing for Manny here in Three Lakes, just like they were talking about with Sugar Camp.
And I'll take on to my other, as far as community service goes. So I log all the community service hours in the power school for the students. And as much as I can, I'd like to follow up with the students about those community service experiences. And so what we just heard of the leadership and those experiences that just move them forward from, you know, from boys to men and from girls to women. It's great to have that requirement, but I think a lot of our kids engage in those opportunities way above, beyond just the forty hour requirement that we have for management. The first positive happen I'd like to mention, about two weeks ago, was contacted by Jennifer Kimolera, who works for the United County Health Department. And right now she's helping head the Northwoods tobacco free call mission. And one of the things that they gifted us with was three large boxes. And in those boxes, we received 250 water bottles. Some were yellow, some were blue, and they were color coded for our elementary students. The yellow ones were for elementary and the blue ones were for the junior high high school students. We're working right now, we got some over Sugar Camp, we're going to work on delegating those between all of our students, students to the best of our ability. We also received 100 pens and 80 packs of gum. So we're going to use those to encourage our students to live a tobacco free lifestyle and make healthy choices. So a special thanks to Jennifer Kimolera on the floor of the day. And then finally, last Tuesday, Mr. Zeus had the opportunity to attend the Wisconsin Education Fair at Lakeland Union High School. Last year, there was a virtual event, didn't quite have the same impact as this year's attendance at Lakeland. Our students had the opportunity, I should say, for juniors, we brought 34 students. And they were able to connect with technical school representatives, with military representatives and universities throughout the state. And Michigan, University of Alabama was there. So it was great for our students to connect with all those representatives and had a good follow up with a lot of our students.
Very good. Thank you for that. Charlie, you got something? All right.
Well, school may be only going out for a month, but athletics, I know almost two months or something.
That is true.
So the first thing I'd like to recognize, and this is something that happens every day, every year, every year, is Karissa McTeese, an O D A C U B triple threat athlete, we call her. So this is a athlete that's a volleyball player, three sports, you know, seven golf clubs. So she just hit her 2,000th career set and she kept her way around, you know, that part of the game at all. So she's had a phenomenal, not only a year, but a career year at Three Lakes. So as an individual, it turns out something special for some of the C all the time there for our athletes. Football's fine though, and first time in a little time for that. Big game against L A B L, it's out of it, probably going to be for the conference championship between, I don't know, what's the name of the three? So it'd be kind of nice for those guys to get that, so they're working hard towards it. This is being out somewhere, all that, great, but soccer's free, free, free. But we play a lot of these schools. Unfortunately, we're one in two of the conferences, maybe Washington, it's been twice. But we've tied in Lakeland and Northwood, and we beat some, we beat the Arab, and we beat some other schools that are fairly substantial. So we agree we're there and I will think you see that team pretty well to be in the playoffs as well. Volleyball, they're 23 and four probably now, four in our conference. You know, if they're not first or second, then we have a potential, they're going to be two. So they're having a great year. We're looking for a nice deep playoff for that team as well. Cross country, unfortunately, we don't have the numbers to score as teams. But we've got a number of individuals that are going to get some results. And, you know, either in the first or second top five, and we raised a bad name. We did have this little bit of an invitation here, here in Chilis, of course, I'd like to thank Ed Jacobson for volunteering up this place. Made 200 million, 200 from that course. Which is a large league as far as the standards to win here. Littlest volleyball, or I'll talk about little football first. That's, if you look at our school schedule, that schedule's been a mess. We've lost some of the games, we picked up some, but that team is three away now. So if we throw at them and we play, they, they have a nice job. And our little ability, something that we've added this year because we have had almost some girls involved in the program. Middle school level is to give the sixth graders a little more playing time, I think, than the ball. So they can play a little more court time than they ever had in the past. It's worked out really well. And they're not traveling away to other schools unless they have a sixth grade team. And they will be, they'll be traveling with the team. And out of all our home games, they're going to be white game, just a lot more court time than they've seen. Some, some have, they've done pretty well. Coach West, that is a nice job here in the first year here, and we appreciate all our coaches and efforts that they've put in for this year.
Very good. Any others?
Just as you saw in Jen's video, our little libraries are going to be going up around here. That got the first one put out by our partner. And Ally's been working with just the community trying to get one up by the beach and then some other private people were picking them up and putting them up around Sugar Camp area. They should be up hopefully before the first freeze.
I just want to extend a thank you to the local Lions Club, the computer vision screen for all of our, our Lewisburgers here today. And then upon my recommendation for our elementary grades, they've been doing that for a long time in this district. And they continue to volunteer time to screen vision for our students. And then just, I'd like to commend our staff at my building level and just across the district for a number of administrative changes that we had, other changes going on. We're asking our staffs to do a lot and they are on board and they are moving forward. So just commendations to them.
Sure. Very good. Any others? I didn't say it before, but at the annual meeting, we did see the presentation put together by Jen West. Jen, I wanted to say thank you for that presentation. It was well done. All right, I think in correspondence.
Just a thank you card that I will share with you amongst yourselves.
Okay, all right. Okay, I will take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unheard, motion's passed at five zero. Thank you everyone for hanging out with us for two